The special meeting in Terre Haute City Council, 5:30 PM, Thursday, September 12th. For the members of the public and the audience, we're here at this special meeting to discuss our first budget discussion for the year 2020. So it will just be a discussion among council members and the mayor and our controller, Leslie Ellis, and then anybody else that the mayor may have brought in from departments. I don't see anybody right now, but... So there won't be an opportunity for public involvement at this time. However, we will. It's around 6 o'clock going to our regular meeting, and at that time, there will be. So thank you for being here, and we'll go ahead and get started. You have a call, Earl?
Councilperson Oller.
Here.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Leader President, one is Axel.
Thank you. Welcome, Mayor and Leslie. And I think, Mayor, I'll just let you go ahead and start.
Okay. All right, very good. Madam President, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to kind of do the first run of an executive overview is what I'm calling this. Since we've got about 30 minutes, it's plenty of time to do that overview. I'm not sure... This is a little bit different than what we've done in the past because typically when we have the first meeting, we go through the budget, you know, kind of department by department. And so tonight, I plan to do an executive summary of the budget, and then I'm going to go through some documents that I provided you here today. And then I assume then we'll have that second meeting. We've got it on the calendar, and then we can do a deeper dive on whatever you either have... I can answer any questions you have tonight, but I want to make sure I get through all of this and kind of see where we're at to prepare for that next meeting. And I'll tell you a couple of things I'll have for the next meeting also. So the first thing is, I gave you all a new budget, and so you should have one to replace the budget you received originally. So you can just get rid of that. Put it kind of the same process we always go through. We advertise high and order it in sure we advertise for a maximum levy. And so you have to put a little bit extra in there because if you don't cut it and you've made it lower, then you'll lose that levy opportunity. And so we've done what we've done for the last 12 years and done just that. So the copy you have tonight then takes a little bit of that out to bring us back down to a more realistic budget and puts us much closer to the one that we seek to get approval on. So there's two components to what you got. The first thing was Budget Form 1, and that's the expenses. So if you look at the top of that, the biggest stack you had, which you probably already put in your notebook, and that says Budget Form 1. So that is all the line item. This is the current proposed budget to you. This is the one we want you to consider. And the second component to that is the miscellaneous revenues. So right behind that should be your Budget Form 2, I think is what it says at the top. Yes, Budget Form 2, Estimate of Miscellaneous Revenues. So hopefully you can find that just real quick. Should be right at the end. It's like three or four pages. Four pages right behind Park Non-Reverting Fund, Budget Form 1. And what this document is, is all of our revenues except for property taxes. As most of you know, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but we have no idea what the property taxes will be next year. We will find out when we get our 1782 notice, probably in February, of how much money we're going to collect next year. So obviously, we ask you to approve a budget with an estimate of property tax dollars, and that's just the way the state system works, as you know. So this is everything else, everything but property taxes. So that's for your leisure, and I'm going to go through a summary sheet that pulls all that out that's really more important, but that gives you all the gory details there about how we... what those numbers mean. And once again, this is based on looking at... When we do these estimates, it's based on six months actual for this year and are projected for the rest of this year, and then do we think there's going to be any changes in 2020? So it's a pretty... It's usually pretty accurate. It's very... It's based on, you know, real information that we have, and it's our best estimate at this time. And one thing I can tell you is, this happens every year, a few of these estimates in here come from the state of Indiana. So DLGF posts things like Edit, Public Safety Loewit, MVH, LRS, and they'll put out two or three different estimates over the course of a budget cycle. They've put out one so far on several of these.
Revenue.
Right, on the revenue. And so they will probably come out with at least one more before you vote on the budget. And so we may have to update the revenues if they do that. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But don't be surprised if something doesn't go up or down on the revenue side on a category because they feel like they have better numbers and they try to get it out to you before you approve your budgets. It's usually not substantial, but there are changes. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. So I just wanted to give you that as a caveat. Any questions on either one of those documents? I think those are pretty self-explanatory. And yeah, I will throw in, we gave you the sanitary budget a while ago, too. So you have two pieces of the sanitary budget, which isn't much. It's just debt services. If you remember, that's all that's left in the sanitary budget. These are the property taxes we collect from everybody in the service district within the sanitary district itself. So then I would take you to a couple of things, a couple of thoughts, I guess, I want to talk about first. So my... Let's look at my executive budget summaries, two-page document. I just kind of want to walk through some key things about this budget. So there's 24 total funds that are being presented for approval by the city council and the DLGF. That's up a little bit from last year because we created a new fund. The original proposed budget that I gave you last week that you threw away tonight, this new budget that you have is $722,521 less than that previous budget, primarily because we lowered a couple of things where we were, as I said, we were going for the maximum levy. So we inflated a couple of numbers until we were able to sort it out, and we had not reduced the group health line items in all the budgets yet because we were still processing the financial information there. So that has been done now, and so the budget you have, as I said earlier, is the one that we're seeking approval on. So it is $722,000 less than the one you set aside a while ago. So the expenses for the... That should say... That should say 20... 20! I've got 2019 in there. I apologize. So ignore that. We're not talking about 2019. I don't know how I typed that in there. Now, the expense budget is $97,175,694, and this is a 4.2% increase over 2019. The total proposed revenues for 2020 are $98,441,170. And I'll talk about the property tax component of that here in a moment. So our total budgeted revenues exceed total budgeted expenses by 1.2, almost $1.3 million. And so we have a balanced budget that we're proposing, and this will be the fifth straight year of having a balanced budget presented to the council. There are 15 individual budgets of the 24 that are balanced, and I'm going to take you to this budget summary sheet, the one-page sheet you have here. Talk about a few of these individually. So this is kind of the... This is really one of the main sheets you have here. This is my spreadsheet that I use, but it has all the budgets on it. It shows the miscellaneous revenue, the estimated property tax, and then total revenues, and then our expenses that are in your Form 1s, the difference, and then the comments about each one of these funds. So I kind of want to just bounce through a few here quickly. First thing I want to say before I guess I get into those details, looking at the property tax column. We're showing the general fund receiving a little over $19 million next year. MVH, about 1.2, if you're following with me. Parks and Recreation, about 2.4. Cemetery, it's a little under $500,000. CCD, a little over $500,000. And Transit, $423,000. This number is based upon this year's property tax distribution. Okay? So we're using what we're going to get this year, and we've put that into the budget for next year because I have nothing else to go on at this point, which means our budget's pretty conservative because we're likely to get a bump in property taxes next year. It may not be much, but we will likely get a bump with assessed values going up and some things getting delayed a little bit. It's all about timing with the county on when they get things on the books and get it, you know, assigned to a tax bill. So this is a very conservative budget I'm presenting to you because it's... We're using this year's revenues for property tax dollars. I'm confident we'll get those dollars, but I'm pretty confident we'll get more than that. Whether it's $100,000 or $1 million, who knows? And once again, we will not know that until probably February. So we'll be two months into the next year, and then we'll find out how much we're going to collect next year. But once again, that's the system. So if you look at that last column where it says comments for each one of these, you can kind of work your way through there. You can see that for the general fund, we have almost a $2 million surplus next year based on this year's property tax distribution. And if you look at the next one, Fire Pension, you'll see that that's in red, negative $107,000, and that's because we're using an existing cash balance there. Over the years, we take... Just to remind you on the property tax dollars, we have a pie, and we have two pies. We have one pie that we divide up, and then we have one pie CCD that is what it is. The whole pie goes to CCD. All the rest of the funds, we can, working with the DLGF, we can dictate what size of pieces of pie you cut, how much you put in any one fund you want to put property tax dollars in. So the distributions could change in the 1782 notice because the DLGF may say, well, we think you need to beef this area up or not. So my point with the Fire Pension Fund is, we have a pretty big cash balance there. And I'll talk about cash balances when I get to the end. But we don't need to put any property tax dollars into the Fire Pension Fund because we've got about $500,000 or $600,000 of sitting in there to be used until we kind of bring that down, and then at some point, we'll have to put some more property tax dollars in it. It may be three, four, or five years before that needs to happen. So the next one is Police Pension. They've got a good cash balance there, too. It's not as big as the Fire Pension is, but this budget is balanced. So the money that we are taking in from the state, remember on the pensions, that money comes from the state. We get reimbursed twice a year, and we're in arrears when we get those reimbursements. They're about a year later than when we pay them out. That budget is balanced by $20,000. So if we spend all the budget, we don't have to touch the reserves for this next year. The next one's Local Road and Street. You can see it's $485,000. In the negative, we've got about a $1 million cash balance there. We're not going to use all that $485,000, but we had to budget from a perspective taking you on down to... I don't want to get you confused, but when we talk about MVH, the next one, on the MVH fund, if you remember, we can only spend 50%, or we have to spend 50% on road paving. So it means you can only spend 50% on operations. So when you do your MVH budget and then you find out if you have more than 50% in operations, you've got to shift it over to LRS. And so in order for us to fund the paving projects that we want to do next year, we had to shift some things over to LRS, and that's why it looks like it's more of a negative balance. They also told us our funding's going to be cut, and I don't know if that's accurate or not. That's what's in here. We're using their numbers. But I'm not sure I understand why MVH and LRS revenues will be cut next year, but that's what it's showing, that we're going to lose about $300,000 between those two funds. So I think there may be an update on that one. That's the only one I'm just not, you know, I... We'll have to see what the state comes back with, but otherwise, this will work for us, but we can't do this more than a few years in a row. So we'll have to reduce that in 2021.
Mayor, do they say why there would be a reduction?
No, they just put out the estimates. So you can get on the DLGF website, pull up Vigo County, look up, you know, City of Terre Haute, and they'll tell you, as of July, something, here's your estimated revenues.
Was other cities?
Yeah, they're all like that. So I'm going to guess, it's like the way they did with Community Crossings. Sometimes they pull money out of that for the state to do things with, either their projects or the state, and our... For Community Crossings, that come back to the communities. But we'll get more information later. It's just their first run at it. And so it's going down where it's been going up a little bit the last three years, ever since the gas tax went up. So just working down through there, the next one, the Park Capital Non-Reverting, it has a negative balance, but we have no income there. That is the residual money from the settlement we had back in 2009. We've been spending this on Parks Department a little bit each year for the last 10 years. Next will be the 11th year. I don't know if we'll spend all that. We'll probably get close to it, but it's just about gone. So we made that last 11 years, that distribution we got. Cemetery, CCI, CCD, we typically have CCD showing a negative balance. We've got a positive cash balance there, too. I don't remember the exact figure right now, the last time I looked, but it's several hundred thousand dollars. And so we're budgeting to do a few things that makes it look like it's going to go over, but once again, we have a huge cash balance there to balance that out. Economic Development Income Tax numbers showing $108,000, so that's pretty small on a $5.6 million budget. With Edit, we typically don't spend all of Edit. I know we've got a $3 million cash balance in there now and probably will have at the end of the year. So we're going to carry over money, obviously, to go along with this. It's almost balanced, but not even touching the reserves for next year, and we have the Lafayette Avenue project in there is the biggest one. We have to write a check in January for about 1.8, 1.9 million for that north of Fort Harrison, Lafayette Avenue project. Let's see. Transportation, then we show Ray Park, and then you can go on down to Holman Links. Those two are kind of grouped together. We continue to, you know, shrink our annual deficit, but those two funds are still out of balance, kind of goes back to the sheet. It will take a significant effort to clear the books on that. Our goal is to get that even first on the annual budget so we don't have add to the deficit anymore. But to clear those deficits for many, many, many years of golf activity will be something that we have to still determine a way... What we're going to have to do, you'll have to transfer money over to those accounts at some point to clear them. So the money still stays in the same pool, but you would take money and you would move it over there and clear that negative balance off once we get them to an annual zero. So then we can talk about that more in detail at the next meeting. And then EMS, non-reverting, we've shown a $386,000 out of balance there, using the cash balance to make it balanced. We've got a new ladder truck payment that starts next year, and that's pretty much most of that. And then what will happen in future years, we pay off a piece of equipment, then we lower that back down, and we'll have a surplus to make that back up. It's just next year, we've got the first payment due when we're making final payments on other equipment. And I'll bring that updated list to you at the next meeting. That's the 20-year capital plan for the Fire Department will show all that. So the bottom line here on this first section is that we'll have a $716, basically $717,000 surplus if we spend 100% of our budget. Okay? And if we get the revenues we think we're going to get. We never spend 100% of our budget. We typically don't spend 1% to 2%. So you're probably talking about another million dollars that'll go to the bottom line on a typical annual city budget year. So but that's what it'll be if we spend every penny that is in the budget. And then the next two lines show the Clerk's Record Non-Reverting Fund. That is a new fund that's been set up this year through the clerk's office that is taking over some half of the salary of the deputy clerk position. They get revenues from other sources, and now that we've got a salary in there, a person, what's had to happen in the past was, they would have to come and bring an appropriation to you to pay for that every year. So we decided to create a budget. Michelle wanted to do that, so we didn't have to bring an appropriation to pay for half of her whatever she decides to spend that on with. But all that's in there, I believe, is half of the deputy clerk, and then I think you've got healthcare benefits and the other associated things. So it's a small budget. She gets revenue, but it is out of balance because takes in $22,000 a year, there's a cash balance there, and the budget's for $33,950. So that's why it's showing that $11,000, but they're pulling that from cash. And then the following year, she can determine whether she needs to balance that back out or there's still plenty of cash coming in or in reserves to cover that. So that's a brand-new budget. And then the wastewater utility follows that, and you can see that we're expecting if we spend 100%, be nearly $600,000 in positive cash flow there. And the overall budget then, about $1.3 million in positive cash flow, revenues over expenses, as I said on my summary sheet. So any questions about that? Okay? Here and now? Yes?
On Ray Park Non-Reverting, you mentioned transferring money to clear it out. Does that need to be done by December 31st?
It would have to be whatever year you wanted to clear it out.
Oh, okay. I see what you're talking about, the bigger picture.
You know what I mean? Yeah. And we're not really there cash-wise to... From my perspective, that we think we've got to solve the... Finish solving the... To balance it each year, and then we will have a deficit. It'll be a hard number, but we just have to resolve that instead of a growing number.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. The other thing is, on your executive summary sheet, total proposed 2019 revenues are... That's probably supposed to be 20.
Twenty, it is.
Are estimated at $98,441... I'm sorry, $98,241.
Right.
How much of that is borrowed? Are we...
None of that is borrowed.
None of it?
None of it, zero.
Not from redevelopment?
Nope.
Not from local...
Nope.
Okay.
So it's all in the miscellaneous revenue column and the property tax column.
Okay.
So if you look down there at the bottom of the middle column, total revenue, it's $98,441,170.
Temporary loans and...
Yeah.
Will we be using temporary loans in 2020?
Yes. That'll reduce the rate. We'll talk about that at the next meeting, but my guess is probably a TAW of $3 million and a six-month, $1 million redevelopment loan.
$1 million plus...
Three million.
$4 million.
Yes. For six months, and then, you know, we won't take the TAW out probably till February or March, that timeframe. We'll do the redevelopment loan renewal in December, probably, like we did last year, and then pay it off in June, and if we don't need it, we won't renew that.
I still struggle to understand how we can call it a balanced budget when we're borrowing $4 million.
Okay, I can easily answer that.
Because I ask it a year, and it's the same answer.
Because it's for cash flow. It's not to support the budget, to make the... To fund these funds, it's for cash flow purposes. It's strictly because we won't get another... When we get to December and we get our tax disbursement, that will balance out this year. And then so we go six months till we get paid again, and we need that cash flow because like in January, we're going to write a check, the end dot, for nearly $2 million. And so that will eat into that leftover cash right off the bat. And so we need that for cash flow purposes. So you borrow it, and then you pay it back within the year so you just have it available, if the cash is available. And so we pay no interest on the redevelopment loan. We pay 100 to somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 a year in interest on the $3.5 million TAW.
And that money actually...
But it has nothing to do with this.
It gets us through like April, May before our next...
And then it kind of happens again about September, October, until we get the disbursement, early disbursement in November.
Okay.
And as soon as we get enough cash on our own, then yeah, you don't need to do that anymore. We'll stop. I mean, I just can't tell you today because we haven't done cash flows for the end of the year yet. I'm going to bring that to you at the next meeting, and I'll be able to clearly show that.
Do you have a ballpark or estimated idea of how many more years we'll need to do any kind of short-term?
I would say, I mean, and all of you, I would assume, want us to be able to pay bills on time, keep the projects on schedule. If our property taxes go up like they should, I would say we would be down to a small TAW in 2021 and then nothing after that. If that. I mean, I would hope we could get there, but I can't tell you right now if we've met our goals for this year until a cash flow to the end of the year, and that's what the accounts are working on.
Okay. Thanks, Ayil. Let's keep going.
Todd, a good way to look at this, that $24 million of property tax revenue, that's $2 million a month. But it's near the end of the fifth month before we get an advanced distribution. So we're nearly $10 million behind receiving that source of revenue until you get the advanced distribution in late May, which I think it's varied from $2.5 to $4.5 million.
It's whatever they will give us.
So that's why until we get cash balances built up some, there has to be some of that, you know, short-term borrowing.
And to take that a little bit farther, Earl, can you estimate what our cash balances should be to get us to the point? I mean, somewhere in the neighborhood $10 million bucks?
We started to get into that discussion the last time we had a comprehensive financial plan, and I think we'll come back to that the next time we get...
Yep, it's being updated as we speak with the newest numbers, and so soon we'll have that from Baker Tilly.
But that was at the bottom of the column of each fund that Paige Sansone had put together. You know, there were targets on that, and we had some discussion about what those ought to be because they need to be higher, in my opinion. They need to be a little higher for a fund that receives property tax revenue and could be lower to fund that receives its revenue more consistently throughout the year. So you've got to look at it, you know, from...
So that's a good point. So like Edit and Cadet and LRS and MVH, we get a monthly distribution. On property taxes, we get two... Well, we get four distributions. We get a little one and the rest of it, and a little one and the rest of it. And so we have to kind of... And that's the big one. I mean, obviously, that's the big dollars. It's $24 million of the total revenue stream.
When do you think we'll have the comprehensive?
I don't know. She's...
We're working on it.
She's got all the data. Their staff is working on it. It isn't going to be long.
When will we have the report from Baker Tilly?
That's it. That's it, yep. And we... I don't... Didn't think to call her today to see. I don't know.
That's okay, I'm just curious. Will we have that before?
Because she needed... She wanted half, you know, the June financials, so we got them to them. She wanted this proposed budget so she can build... That's what they didn't have, and so they're working on the last piece of it. It'll be a three-year look.
Just to follow up, will we going to get that before we vote on the budget?
Oh, yeah. I would... I hope. I mean, I would think... I'm hoping we'll have it at the budget meeting, '26? Is that what the date is? Sorry. Whatever that date is, I would... We're going to really push them to get it for that meeting so then you can have it before you vote on it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, '23.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a few... Couple of questions. You may answer them later. Perhaps you were going to answer them later. One other fund that I guess we're not required to have a budget for, but I think we should have a budget for, is group health, non-reverting. That cash balance is plummeting, and I'd like to know what we expect to happen in that fund going forward so I can compare that to what does happen.
So what I would say to that is, and I think you and I had a short conversation because you asked me about why that it was so negative. I had the same question. We are auditing that fund right now to make sure that all the proper revenues got posted. We believe that... And when I say revenue, that means when the employees, we take out of their paycheck, then that's expensed, easily expensed because ADP does our payroll, we ship it in there, we take the expense out. We're not sure all of the revenues, our revenues from the employees were posted in the right places. And so the person that was doing that left at the end of last year, and so we're walking back through all of that.
Then that money's got to be in some other cash balance.
Right. And, and we know that.
And, and I don't know what other cash balance it might be in, so.
The only thing it can be in would be not expensed out of the funds, the departmental funds, okay? Because then, when you entered in on the other side as revenue, I mean, it could still be hanging out there. You know what I mean?
I understand.
So I'm going to guess that that's going to go down, I'm pretty confident it will, but we've had to go through every paycheck, every payroll, every person, and we're, we're getting about done with that. Then when we do the next, the July financials, it'll be accurate.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. So, but, but once we do that?
Uh huh, okay, so let me finish that. Yeah, okay, so I didn't, I didn't, keep going. So, we know now, it varies a little bit, but we write one check a month now. This is really awesome. I mean, this new health plan that we have is, not only going to save us money, but it's saving a lot of internal work in the controller's office. It, because we were self-funded, you know, Anthem was paying our claims, that we had to do all that work, and we had to pay them multiple times a month. Now we write one check to the Teamsters per month. And it can vary a little bit, people get off the plan, you know, those kind of things. But it's easy, or much, much easier to budget now, what it's going to cost us for 12 months. That's how we were able to reduce the group health line items in here, because we kind of, what did we do this, this year's a bad example, because next year will be what really counts. So this year, the new health insurance started July 1st, and so we started paying them in July, we'll make six payments to them this year, but we have runouts with our self-insured plan with Anthem. So anybody that went to the doctor until June 30th, bills keep coming in. So you've got expenses to Anthem, and we've got to pay the bills for the employees. But it's, it's almost, it's pretty much dwindled down now, so that's pretty much stopped. So this year, we'll look a little high, maybe, I don't know yet, but it'll be, that's not what we can use. So we take that, what we're paying for this six months, and look at a 12-month rollout for next year, that tells us exactly what we need to budget, and that's what we put in here, in this budget for the next 12 months. Now, once we do that, we can, we can build a budget for that, whether we give it to the State Board of Accounts or not, they don't.
That's right.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
They would give it to them.
Exact, no. And they kind of have an internal budget, but I don't even have that. I mean, that's something that they track that, and monitor that in the controller's office, but we can create one for the next meeting, and just kind of show you here, how, here's what we think next year will look like.
When we can, when the?
I think we're getting close.
You know, we don't need it this month, or next month, but maybe November, or something.
I'd just like to be done with it.
If we have a deficit in that fund balance, it'd be nice to see how it's going to perhaps work its way out.
Yes, I just need to know what that number is, that's the key. Because I don't know if it's $2 million, or it's $800,000, or what, I don't know.
But, and I always bring this up, because as you look back, at the same time, you kind of look ahead, so when you get the prior activity sorted out, then just take the next step, if you can.
Well, as soon as we get the July financials done, we'll be able to do that.
So you're, you're pretty confident we're on track for 24 million or so of property tax revenue total for 2019?
Yes.
Okay.
Conservative.
Because, right.
That's good to know.
It is good to know.
Can, can somebody just kind of run that debt service coverage ratio on the wastewater utility budget, and make sure we're, we're okay there?
We can do that. It's, trust me, if we weren't, the SRF would be calling us today. They monitor that, we send them monthly financial statements, they rerun that stuff all the time. We just need to ask Baker Tilly to give us one of those little summary sheets. Yep, yep.
And then, you've given us the Form 1 for the Turhook Sanitary, it's got a debt payment, $4,236. Is that the, is that the new Long-Term Control Plan Phase 2?
No, we pay, we pay Long-Term Control Plan out of wastewater treatment budget. This is property taxes that go against the property tax-based bonds. The, the Long-Term Control Plan is a revenue-based bond.
Okay, but I thought we paid off that bond.
We did, and I think the new, the new bond is a revenue-based bond, so we use the property tax.
Okay. Well, so, the new bond payment for next year is a little under $500,000. Now, I don't know if that's just, that can't just be interest and principal, I didn't have a chance to dig into that number, but we had to add to the budget, so the wastewater budget increased by about a half a million dollars. But these property tax dollars go against those?
But we did have like 7.6 million a year in debt service.
Uh huh. And I think this year?
The old bond that paid off?
Yes.
Right.
And I know we've got a new one coming on, and it's a much smaller amount, then I just wanted to know if that was it, or not?
Yes, it is.
That's the only new thing, right. You know, I don't, it's just a little bit higher, because I think, some of those other bonds, the payments aren't always the same every year. And so there's maybe a few thousand dollars. So it's $7 million, but there's a, you know, it's a little bit higher when I compared that.
But the new one was, like you said, was a property tax bond, and I know the amount's going to be several million dollars less, at least, than what the old one was, and that's what I'm just trying to find out.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just what that number is.
I may have missed it, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then?
And can I just say one thing about this? This used to be $6 million. So, you know, because of property tax caps, we never talk about that side of it, but this is what we collect now, but we used to collect $6 million a year to pay on bonds. So now we have to do it out of the wastewater treatment, out of revenue, just an FYI.
Okay. And then, 1% to 2% under spend, is that a, you think a reasonable number?
Yes.
If you use 1, that's what I'm going to use, I bet we outperform that a little bit, but you know, you just, it's hard to say. We're there now, for this year, halfway through, we're in the same place.
Okay.
So, it's pretty consistent.
So, 1.5 is the number to?
I'd like to use 1, but if you want to use 1.5, I think we could probably get there.
Okay.
If you use 1, though, that would be very conservative, kind of like we've estimated everything else, and that'll give you a pretty good idea.
Sold.
Okay, all right, all right.
Ayew.
Mayor, just, if I could, just for a second, I'm looking at your executive summary on the second sheet.
Okay.
Of course, I get excited about projects, I'm glad to see Lafayette Avenue Street Project is on there. So are you. I saw somebody on Lafayette Wednesday in a wheelchair, just tooling down the road. So, glad to see this is on there. Do you, how far do you think we'll get in 2020 with Lafayette Avenue?
It'll go from Fort Harrison to Hawthorne, to city limits.
Be completed by the end of the year?
Probably not by the end of the year. It's a big project.
Okay.
You know, it's, it goes to bid in November of this year, and so Endot will work that out with whoever the bidder is, and we'll get a schedule then, to kind of tell us what that looks like.
Okay.
But you can't do that until it's bid out, and we know who the contractor is.
Sure. Okay. Turn to the River, how, how far do you think we'll get on that?
Had a great meeting today, showing the, we've merged our project, you know, the parking lot project we're doing, that's funded through the Long-Term Control Plan, and the Turn to the River project, to include what's needed through the middle of the campus here. We now have that on one document, and working through the engineering estimates of all that. So, what needs to happen next is I need to meet with Mary Kramer, and get a better handle on their timeline, and when they're going to do things. But our project for the parking lot goes to bid this fall, and construction will begin in the spring, and so this entire parking lot will be totally destroyed, demolished, removed, and a new one started. It'll be completed by the end of the year, before the asphalt plant closes, obviously, to get it put back together. And then we will leave that middle section alone for the Turn to the River project. We'll figure out what we do to put some, you know, make it clean, clean it up, but that's the kind of stuff we were dealing with in our meeting today with our consultants. So, their consultant, our consultant, we've merged both ideas together, and we got a, we got a solid plan.
So that'd be two funding sources, ours wastewater treatment and her grant?
Yeah, well, but what Mary's going to do first is the fountain area. Hers is going to be like four or five projects over many years. So then you'll have the stretch through here, whether they can do all of that in Phase 2, or they do part of it, I don't know yet. That'll be up to their private funding and their grants.
All right.
We'll help with that, but that'll be primarily paid for with private dollars, or grants.
Okay. And then, just staffing, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but I see you've got three engineers.
So, but let me explain that, that's why, I hadn't got the second page yet, so no, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that's kind of, when you look at the general fund, that's why the general fund's up a bit. So, we're adding two code enforcement officers to the budget. That was something that we talked about for a while, but we have not been in a position to do that. At one point, I got an email from Councilman Nation about that, and we, I waited to the end, because I wanted to make sure everything else would work, that's kind of the way we always do this. We really haven't added many positions in the last many, many years. So, that's the most critical area, there are other areas that need staff, but code enforcement is in the worst shape. So we've added two positions and benefits, and I think that came out to like $93,000 or something, so basically $100,000 for that. We had, our Engineering Non-Reverting Fund has been using up some of its cash balance on certain years, because the revenue that comes into Engineering Non-Reverting is projects that we inspect, our staff inspects. And so when we, when redevelopment does a project, wastewater does a project, it's paid for with property tax dollars, or other, any other project that we have a company come in and do, and we decide to inspect it ourselves, instead of having an outside consultant inspect it, we generate that revenue, and then that funds that, puts money in that fund. Well, we're not going to have that many projects next year that we can use. The SRF will not let us use our own staff to inspect, even though it saves money. They refuse to let anybody do that, they just don't. You make you go hire an outside consultant to do your inspecting, and adds cost to the project, but that's the rules. And so, we can't inspect the $60 million worth of work we're doing, that we've started now, that will continue into next year, we're not allowed to inspect that. So we have to pay someone else to do that. So, we moved three, you know, and you remember over the years, you've been here long enough, that we've moved things over to take relief off the general fund, and every once in a while, we stick one back. It's all based on cash balance, and making sure that we can fund the things that we put into that Engineering Non-Reverting Fund. So this year, and probably this, maybe this year only, we'll see, we're moving three staff that we had moved from Engineering General years ago, a few years ago, or, had moved them from Engineering to Engineering Non-Reverting, now we're moving them back, because we have property tax dollars to cover it, and we don't have revenue coming in from inspections to pay for it.
All right.
And we also moved the maintenance supervisor we had moved over there a few years ago, we put it back in the general fund. So, we've moved four positions into the general fund, that was in Engineering Non-Reverting, and added two new code enforcement positions, and we're still running nearly a $2 million surplus in the general fund next year of revenue over expenses. So that, that's, and you know, when in the future, there may be a time when we move it back, if we start building up cash balance there again, let's let that pay for it, that's what it's for.
Okay. Sorry for jumping ahead.
No, that's okay. And I just didn't really have time to get into a lot of the nitty-gritty of this, because some of it's really small potatoes on what the increases are, but obviously, it adds up to quite a bit, and so I'm going to do that at our next meeting, I'll have a little bit more of a breakdown, which I'll get to that sheet here in a second. You'll have it, but you just don't have line item by line item. You have the categories that the DLGF provides. And then what I wanted to say in that last bullet there, on that second page, just capital kinds of things. And that's, that's probably one of the biggest increases in here, besides the wastewater thing. There's, there's two things I want to talk about. So in wastewater, we had some increased costs, because of capital needs, and extra $200,000 for lagoon cleanup, and there were several things that made the wastewater budget go up a little bit. Once we get the lagoons finished, so for, I'll give you an example, we'll get that finished next year. So the 2021 wastewater budget will go down by $1.7 million. It won't go down necessarily, we might pay for something else, but that lagoon's, the lagoon's worth three-year transition to get those cleaned up, and next year it'll be completed. So we'll be able to apply that $1.7 million to maybe some stormwater things, or whatever. I mean, but just giving you an idea, it went up a little bit more, because we've got to finish it, and we know it's going to be about 1.7 to finish it, and that's what's in the budget for this year. The other increase is when it comes to capital, we need a new grave digging machine that can work on the hillside, our old backhoes, just, it's, it's had it, we need to buy something new there, and they need a new dump truck. Parks Department needs two new dump trucks, we had one that was destroyed in an accident, somebody hit us head-on, and we had, had to write that one off, and so there's things like that we just need to replace, that we haven't been able to do for a while. The police department now, you know, we recently bought 12 new police cars, we'll be buying 12 more next year, trying to get some of those cars with 200,000 miles on them out of the fleet, and get them out of the way. So, we've put a plan together to do that, so we'll have payments on that. Ladder truck is the fire department one, and in wastewater, we bought the new camera truck recently. So they've got a few other things to pay for, but we bought the camera truck, and we'll have a multi-year payment on that. That was an expensive piece of equipment. So just, I just wanted to give you some generalities. If you go to the next thing, the budget comparison spreadsheet, everybody always likes that document, it'll show you what was adopted for 2019, it runs a different direction if you find it, and then what this proposed budget that we gave you tonight, the updated budget, the proposed budget, and then the increase and decrease on the categories of each of those budgets. So the first one, the first section is obviously the general fund, looks like it's three, two and a half pages long, a little over two and a half, two pages long, and then it shows you the total of the controlled funds, which is the general funds, that's controlled funds. Then you move into cemetery, CCD, all the rest of the budgets are here, just like you had, that we looked at earlier, but it will tell you the increases and decreases from the previous year, current year. So, we'll drill that down just a little bit more, it'll probably just be a one-page summary sheet, it's not, because there's not that much difference, but we'll call out some things that we added, and just be able to give you a little bit more clarity on that. So, I think that is the end of my handouts.
I had a couple of questions, Mayor. One is, have, have all the union contracts that would affect this budget been done, and so they're already reflected here, or could there be some change here?
Is that, no, thank you, I, it's in here, but I didn't say it. So on your second page of your handout that I gave you, there are 4% raises for all full-time employees in here, except elected officials. We'll go another year with no raises, I know you guys didn't want that, but it's, I think we've had two raises for elected officials in 12 years.
Are there any outstanding negotiations going on?
They are, but it's 4%, so that's all set, even though it hasn't, maybe not been approved by the Board of Works yet.
But anything on, there are other benefits that are?
Nope, not affects, not, not, not that's not a budget within the budget. There's not, I mean, you know, because there's always negotiations about, we, you know, we want an extra $500 for boots somewhere, that isn't really a financial thing, it doesn't go to them, but it's, it's, it's related to the contract, and it's in here, you know what I mean? But really, we're down to police, finalizing police, I think, where we finalized wastewater, so whatever we have will all go to the Board of Works at the same time, but on this part of it, it's 4% raises across the board, and that's all built into the budget.
Okay.
So if one of those contracts fails, then we will save money, if that's the case.
But we didn't see any increase.
Nope, no need for any, because it's all in here, it's all funded.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I apologize, I skipped over that line, I think. Neil got me ahead on one there, sorry, that's all right. I should have looked.
I was thinking about no reason for that condition.
Yeah, I know, I get it. So any questions?
I just noticed, in the controllers department, I just noticed, looking over the original budget that we were given, that the listing of all your people, I know you've had, one of your concerns has been that you've been low on employees there. Are these, are, first of all, these positions have been filled, and that you've been concerned about, but I assume they're still reflected in here, this is no reduction in your staff? your staff?
No reduction in my staff, some of them have not been filled yet, we're still filling positions.
Okay.
We have it fully filled by the end of the year.
Okay.
So we've lost two people, and you gained one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we still have.
I just knew that had been a stated problem for you, and I wanted to take this opportunity to ask about it before you got there.
And we need to fill them, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we want to fill them, that will help tremendously.
But they've got to be the right fit, you know?
Sure.
They can't just be warm bodies, and if, we've had trouble finding people with certain skill sets that we need, that we don't have to use any outside help, you know, to, to do work with.